Yeah.
All right. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors regular meeting is Tuesday, September ninth, ten A.M. I will call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. All right, our first item is to approve meeting minutes dated August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five.
I'm sure I'll move on to three second.
I'm motion is second, any questions or comments? Morning.
Good morning.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Item four, approve the agenda.
Madam Chair, I need to brief item four with the removal of item number six.
Okay, the second.
I'll start.
Okay, motion is second, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item five, approve consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I'll move on to item five.
I'll start.
Motion is second, any questions or comments on the consent agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Uh huh.
Okay.
Opposed, the motion carries. We struck number six. Item seven, approval for Vandy Stone, well, we're gonna just ruin this. Vandy Stone Construction LLC and Mid Iowa Site Services LLC as private sewage disposal system contractors for the two thousand twenty-five installation year.
I'll move on to the show, sorry.
The motion is second, any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, the motion carries. Item eight, approve resettlement parcel number one A one three two zero two zero zero two. There's the legal description, to carry mark care and mark later requests from Brenna Exster and Webster County administrator.
So. Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Item number nine, approve chair design recommendation letter for Summit Farms Pork LLC for proposed confined feeding operation to be located in section two, Jackson Township. We're gonna wait for a motion on this because I think we might have some evidence to that. So, Mr. Johnson? Oh, first off, just for this, just to maintain some sort of order and not have this meeting go on forever, we're gonna limit comments to approximately three minutes, just try not to go over three minutes. And then if anything is already said, just try not to repeat it, but we want to give everybody a chance to speak and that seems to be a fair way to do it. Also, when you do speak, make sure you come up to the podium and stick into the microphone, tell people who you are and where you're from. Morning. Mr. Johnson, you can be able to start.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisor Jeff Johnson, planning and zoning administrator. Buster County received an Iowa DNR construction permit application for a master matrix for confinement feeding operation submitted by Summit Farms Pork LLC last month. That shown out the matter, the proposed operation is to be located in section two, Jackson Township, to south of the old county line there. With a maximum four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine head of swine feeder finishes within two new deep pine swamp pits, swine confinement barns. Site data concludes there is no well within one hundred feet, no public use within four thousand one feet, no weapons within two thousand feet, and no protected waters within two thousand feet. The closest residence is located approximately one half mile to the south at eleven oh two Fairbanks. Going on to the next slide. This is the posed buildings adjacent to Fairbanks. They're highlighted in orange, there'll be two ventilation fans located to the backs behind these buildings, close to the west, twenty toward the west. So staff has reviewed the construction permit with the master matrix along with the DNR. The DNR did their site evaluation last week with the applicant. It has a passing score of four hundred and sixty. Staff recommends that the board approve the request and approve the permit application. Just note, consistent with the last confinement application that the county received and reviewed with the board supervisors a few years back, staff recommends that a condition of approval be added that states prior to any annuals occupying the buildings, electrostatic fencing be installed and maintained adjacent to the ventilation vans to capture any particles emitted, which will help further reduce odor. The applicant will also be required to conduct ongoing observation of this fence. So advertisement for this agenda item was placed in our official newspapers last month and the applicant Summit Pork Farms is available to discuss any questions if they may have.
Um, one question really quick that I just think, you said the closest residence is about half mile to the south, and the fans are pointed, or will be pointed west?
West.
Do you happen to know off the top of your head, or are the people, how close the nearest residence is to the west?
More than half mile.
Okay. Okay. Sir, would you like to come just introduce yourselves and where you're from, thank you, and where you're from and introduce whoever else?
I'm Mitch Baum, Summit Farms Pork. I'm from Old Iowa. The Laura Grumman is the Pinnacle Group, we're also on the call to answer any questions, so setbacks, et cetera. I'd like to share one thing, I did review your prior permit with that, where you referenced the electric static fence and your recommendation. This facility is planned as bands on three sides of each building. So there's tunnel fans to the west, like sanitary mention, as well as on the north and south side of each barn. My familiarity with those fans, there's one pig owner integrator that uses them quite often and they don't have, often have pit fans in their pits. What we do at Summit, and even though it's not points taken and required in the master matrix as submitted, we do plant trees around all of the three sides, the north, south, and west sides of our sites in this particular location. The difference with that application is the permit itself isn't specific to ventilation type and unit capacity, so if this facility was even naturally ventilated rather than a tunnel ventilated, the electrostatic fence wouldn't be applicable. So I'd recommend and, and, and agree to amend, whether, what you make your decision, amend that to the tree plan and the tree break versus electrostatic fence. Not opposed to electrostatic fence, just don't have the data and resources here this forum to address that, but as you can go across, the majority of our sites have tree plans established on them, even though it's not a part of master matrix. But how to answer any questions and go from there?
Yeah, when you plant the trees, do you plant them from seed or do you like them?
They'd be a bare root tree to start, they're most easily established, actually in our experience, pairs of planting a, 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 a planted plant or ball and earlup, these evenings take roots and establish faster and more over seed and thin as they, as they grow.
Okay. And did you have folks, oh, John, do you want to?
Those, those are green trees.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, uh, three rows on three sides.
Yeah, because I was thinking if those were ever rains into us.
Yeah, so the, the, what we establish is a shrub, a fast growing tree, not a hybrid growth, they tend to reach havoc on tile lengths and aren't, uh, they're, they're soft and indigently, but a silver maple and then a, a, an evergreen or cedar type tree as well.
And did you have, um, uh, the folks from the Pinnacle Group, there is Drew and there is Amber on the line, if they could just let us know if you'd like to undo your, um, if you have anything you'd like us to add?
Yeah, um, Amber here from Pinnacle. Do, if you guys would like, I can go through the matrix, but ask for the trees, I think Mitch covered that part pretty well.
Okay. All right, John, I know that you were going to, thank you, you were going to let us know any written, like, oral comments, so we could read those.
Read the comments here.
That would be great, thank you.
All right, so this one's from Ben Anderson, as taxpayer of Webster County, somebody who has fought vehemently against the blatant unconstitutional nature to Summit Farm's resolutions, carbon timeline, which is every bit as dangerous as it is unethical, it is appalling to me that the same company would set its sights on the county to put up a hog confinement, to be quite frank, the only thing more appalling than a company like Summit having to go even apply for a project like this after all they have done, would be for the board of supervisors to approve it, make no mistake, this is the same company and the same people that are threatening elderly folks across the state. That they can either give up their land, have hard easements, or they can sit down and cut up while Summit forcefully takes it via domain, which the Iowa Utilities Commission, they have bought and paid for, rolls out the red carpet for them to do so. The idea that even a single member of this board of supervisors, we vote, should now approve them, to build a hog confinement here in Webster County is laughable, make no mistake, this is in line. This is a line in the sand that you would be violating by granting this application. Any attempt by any of you to claim that you supported property rights after voting yes on this application will fall flat on its base. Please consider the gravity of your votes today and the message they will send. I have a letter from a Glenda Benson. Dear Mr. Cogburn, I'm writing to you in regards to the hog confinement that is being considered for approval, northern Clare. My name is Glenda Benson and I live on an acreage south of there. I have lived here for over thirty years. Several years ago, hog confinement was built less than a mile west of there. There are many days when the wind is out the wrong direction and the overhear is unbearable and it is possible to be outside. Sometimes on a nice day, if I have my house opened up for fresh air, the wind can change, the whole house can change and the whole house will fill up with, by all or odor. Needless to say, I'm just heartbroken and so disheartened that this has happened. I am concerned about how the proposed hog confinement northern Clare for several reasons. It could have opened the door for future hog confinements in the area and the pollution of our air and water quality. Also, not only do these facilities diminish the quality of life for the residents in the area, it also affects our property values. I would respectfully, respectfully ask you to consider voting no. Please help to maintain the integrity of the environment and the quality of our life in beautiful Webster County, sincerely, Glenda Benson. I have Maria Schmidt. Your supervisors, as a lifelong resident of Webster County who was raised in the Clare area, I strongly oppose the proposed Summit Farms Pork Farm confinement in Jackson Township. This facility threatens our community far more than it helps, the reality is clear, it will pollute the air with unbearable odor and harmful gases. It puts our water at risk of containment from newer spills and runoff. It will drive down property values for families who have worked hard to build their homes in the area. It will damage our roads and endanger safety with heavy truck track. Approving this confinement would sacrifice the health, safety, quality of life of local residents for the profit of an outside company, that is unacceptable. I urge you to stand with the people you represent, reject this permit. Our county deserves clean air, safe water, and a future that protects families, not factory farms, sincerely, Maria Schmidt. This next one is from Laura Passal. Being there is a hog confinement looking to come into our area, I personally would like to object to this, if they cannot promise that the confinement smells will not come downwind from the north to the city of Clare. We have had farm and egg smells from four different directions for many years and finally we have been blessed that flies and smell are not an issue to us at any time. We couldn't go outside at all because it smelled so bad. Companies promise they won't even smell them, that is not true. We are three to three and a half miles south of this proposal, I think they should have contacted everyone around that area. We have friends a mile or so away and they haven't heard anything about this till I told them, 'cause in paper this last weekend. I did see the legal publication, but most people don't read them and it wasn't very specific, it said Jackson two, Jackson, or sorry, section two, Jackson Township. That covers a wide area as there is no Summit Farms Pork LLC listed as the owner in Beacon, so you couldn't look up where located. Very vague for anyone looking, I am speaking for myself and some of the citizens of Clare that I've talked to, that we oppose this unless there are strict odor controls. Thank you, bar pass out, mayor of Clare, as you guys probably get addressed odor. And that is the letters we have received in regards to this. The only other thing I would add is that it looks like we of the county have been working on some variety of river trail project in that area. And based on the map I've seen so far, I don't know if that goes, it extends into Jackson Township, but I would be concerned still to see what's going to happen. So.
Did you, as the supervisor of that, did you receive, invited, talk to you, all comments?
I had a little comments given to me down there, but I asked that they share, there was a concern raised about the trail, I mentioned, sir.
And I think I was just making a quick look, it seems like two of the four people who wrote in are property owners, so. Thank you, all right.
Seems like Drew.
Drew, go ahead and unmute yourself, please.
Yes, Drew and Amber with Pinnacle here.
Did you have something you wanted to add? Drew, you had your hand up. Uh, unmute yourself if you do. Well, so, Supervisor Boat, I know you had some concerns, did you want to go into just precedents and what Mr. Johnson was discussing about previous agreements and your previous agreements?
I've been on this forum about nine years. And at one point, we, we voted down a hog confinement by Marlin. DOT turned it right around and permitted them to go ahead and put this hog confinement up. At that point, we asked this person to put this electrostatic fence up and put the trees up and stuff. And I'm not gonna use the language he used towards me at that point, but he said since we wouldn't support him, he wasn't gonna do it. And now we've got a hog confinement that's doing pretty much whatever they want to. No matter what we vote on today, the DOT is going to, or excuse me, the DNR is going to allow this facility to go in. And I find that it's a lot easier to work with him, to try and fulfill some of the things that the citizens out there want, as in maybe getting this electrostatic fence, trying to make sure that they get trees up, make sure that it's a little bit, so you don't have to look at it and you hopefully don't have to smell too much of it with this electrostatic fence that they put on the back. We went and looked at them over in Harden County and it has reduced the smell of the hog confinement well over fifty percent. They, they did a really good job of trying to knock it down. I'm not familiar with the type of hog confinement that Summit is talking about, but I'm here to tell you, if we don't work with the hog confinement people, they're gonna get it anyway and they're gonna do what they want to. So I think it's a lot easier to work with the citizens around and work and try to be a good neighbor because it's gonna go in no matter what we say. So, let's see what comment I have.
Mr., Mr. Despo, do you have any feedback on what happens if this is denied, what happens if this goes on?
Well, I'm certainly sympathetic to homeowners, you know, people that live in the area if there's gonna be a trail, you know, nearby. But the way the legislation is, we don't control the state legislature, only by voting. They put a position where the county essentially hasn't vote, but we really don't have any. We have a vote to basically say whether or not we think they met criteria set up by the legislature, the active major, it's this point, I, whether or not, whether or not they met this tax court criteria. And just like Supervisor Boat says, you could all vote no right now and it doesn't change the fact that the Department of Natural Resources has been ordered to go forward in any event, because if we voted no, in essence, you're, it can be a protest vote, but it's not going to, it's not going to change things. So I certainly understand, I'm not a policymaker, I understand Supervisor Boat's position that he's more inclined because of past experience and the legislation in essence had to change. We don't really have much authority. Rather work with these folks so we can stay on with permitting and such to follow through on promises to trees. You know, I know nothing really about the company, other, you know, I know basics about the company, I don't have any reason to disbelieve that they're going to do these things, they're gonna plant these trees, but in any event, they decided not to. If we're working with them, we do have some authority to make them follow through with our permit. Aside from that, we have very little control and as Supervisor Boat said, regardless if it was a five, zero vote of no today, they would still be allowed to build this facility, or DNR, either zero dot one. So that's kind of the illusory, or it appears like we have some authority here today, but we really don't have much authority, other than to say, hey, we're cooperative, if these people try to make it as minimal and impact environmentally, et cetera, et cetera. But that's just the unfortunate way the law is right now.
So while.
The county don't have law.
Well, I was just gonna say, so while it looks like, well, it looks like, but it was not.
No, it's, it's what I say is a loose tree. Honestly, I'm not quite sure why they even have supervisors vote on these things in the legislation, because it just puts something else where we really have no authority. It's really your legislator, so that's, you need to talk to about being changes if you're not happy with the current system.
Thank you. I'm just.
I would like to add something to what Bob was talking about, so Associate Professor Daniel Anderson did a study on these electrostatic fences and it was highlighted in the National Hog Farmer publication in two thousand nineteen. In that publication, I've read the, the whole study that he did, spanned over four months to two other sites in Alden, and at least on down, downwind odor control, they found, I believe it was a thirty-one percent reduction in odor downwind of their hog sites by using electrostatic fences. So I think there's, there's excellent application studied by, you know, reputable sources to show that these fences do work, they do stay with the planning to do, they're in use in other facilities, I think if we, you know, I hit the trees, but I think if you really want to be serious about being good neighbors and good stewards with the, you know, we need to take some serious steps to be that good neighbor and be a part of that community. And, you know, the study's there, like I said, National Hog Farmer, which I'm sure you probably even get it at your office, two thousand nineteen highlighted that study. So I think there's evidence that that works and it functions the way it's designed to. And I definitely need more of an advocate of, you know, hey, we can work together on that, but we need to do some real meaningful things to help our community out at the same time. Can I ensure that article doesn't fall?
That's great, I can add it just from my own knowledge. Mrs. Hype, I can see you are eager to come talk to us, just say your name and your address, please, or where you live. Thank you.
Chris Hype, Port Dodge. Just question as to if it goes through, who would, on the hindsight, the audit, you make sure they have four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine in the bonds? Or less?
We're, we're hearing that it's DNR.
And then we'll give a report to the largest supervisors?
I think I've never seen a report in the DNR, once it leaves us, they pretty much take care of everything.
So we need to contact the DNR, they would answer that question, to make sure that it's being followed through. I, I'm.
Sadly, I'm not familiar with audit, they may be subject to inspection, but I'm not familiar with, like, they, and have audit, that we ever received, that we ever received copies of. I just said I'm not familiar with there being an audit, there being inspections by DNR, I'm not familiar with their process, I'm just saying I've never seen a report like that come back to the board of supervisors. I would think that the, the size of the facility they're building would have some limitations in capacities and they probably aren't going to build a bigger facility than they need for the legal amount, based on the drawings and such. Other than the size of facility they're building, I think that's probably the best indicator of the headcount limitation.
I would trust the.
I understand.
Thank you. Anyone else would you like to come speak? Yes, sir, come on down, just say your name and where you live, please, sir.
Larry Colvin.
Well, you gotta stay in the microphone. I know, I know, no one likes talking to the mic. Hi.
Larry Colvin from Clare, we've been ready when you're setting the bridge, and I'm just curious how far the buildings are from the bridge. It's gotta be very close to the two thousand, it would be two thousand.
Shows about one thousand four hundred eighty-seven feet to the creek, anyway.
Yeah, and it's also on the south side of their farm, it's sloped that way. It's now flat ground on the south side of their farm. It's waterways and such. So just so, you can't see it from venture, but you start at that narrow point and you wind around, that's all sloping the wider end, sloping to the west, and the south end is really. But it's also coming from the building side there, south, slight. So the north, from the north side of the buildings, it's flat ground. So, I mean, just so you people know, I, I don't know exactly what you need to go through, but just so you act your own facility, what's going on.
Thank you, it's nice to have your concerns on the record as well.
I mean, we've hardly crossed the other side of the bridge, so I've seen it for years and years and years, it's, yeah. I was just curious, water wise, and then they're talking about deep pits, how that could be tested in time, concrete cracks, I mean, no matter how you go out. Is there any type of testing you guys have on the outside of the buildings?
Maybe, I mean, it's come up.
Well.
Nice to meet you. Well, yes, to just a couple of Larry's points there on the, the buildings and the pits and how they're engineered with the requirements for the. the requirements of the DNR. Similar to home in your perimeter tile of a sump pump. On the outside of that pit at the pit floor is a perimeter drain tile. And that is required to be connected to an inspection port. And then to, and what the purpose of that is, is the mineral in the pit is fibrous, feed materials, et cetera. Frankly, the, the risk of any mineral getting out of that pit is very small. They actually engineer those pits specifically. It's more that the risk is the the hydrological pressure of the, in the soil or the water, putting pressure on that pit and moving it. So that's the purpose of the engineering of the perimeter drain tile required to have an inspection port, so water can't be sampled, yes.
No, I guess the paper, it's a two thousand, you're talking what, fourteen hundred?
Yeah, it's two hundred. Let me address that as well. In the, the DNR's requirements, the, the minimum distance to a surface water cut, that and bank, which is dredge ditches, if such, is five hundred feet. So we're over two times the legal setback requirement of distance to water.
I knew that, just my general figuring, being on the other side, per the score up to forty, it couldn't be two thousand feet. It was just going back.
What they do is they measure out two thousand feet.
I didn't know the regulations exactly how far you had to be, because the most two thousand feet are gonna be the water.
Yeah, so in the, in the paper, it says the swine facility is located in addition on the nine hundred eighty-seven feet above the required five hundred feet away from the closest water source. That is Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Well, hi. We can just talk for as long as you want. Why did I even say three minutes? Anyone else who's good at the cause? Anyone at the table here? Okay, I will entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Approved with? Did you want to approve with recommendations?
With the recommendations, yes.
For electrostatic fencing or?
Well, I don't think we can force it with the recommendation that they put the electrostatic fencing and what the freshy footage, your permit.
Is that, yeah, I think exactly. Is your permit including the electrostatic? Same thing, Richard?
That is, no, it doesn't.
Is that what you're asking to be included?
Yes, that's the recommendation is to go ahead and include that type of fencing being installed prior to the micropacking of the building with any types of animals. And so the hog, the reduction order, which seems to be one of the biggest concerns, the whole this type of facility.
Then what I, what I would suggest is if Bob was moved to, if Bob liked to make a motion to approve the recommendation letter, subject to an additional condition by the county, that electrostatic fencing, in compliance with the manufacturer's recommendation, be installed and operated prior continuously after this facility becomes operational, as an end is installed before animals begin to be put into the facility.
Well, the fence will be installed adjacent to the demolition fence themselves. Purpose of all that speculation. You know what he said.
Shout out, trust me, you got all that down. Glad you reported this. So I do have a motion. Do I have a second?
It's like that.
I have a second. Any questions or comments?
But that, sort of comments around that, that also be included in our comments back to the DNR, assuming that's what you're saying. But I know there's, I know that kind of with the what Darren was saying there is, you know, we can submit comments back to the DNR based on our recommendation, assuming that 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 permit and the comment of the request. I'd also ask them to like the National Hog Farmer article on that study you sent, but I'm too, I did share that article with everybody. But I think that there's enough evidence to support the use for that, that I think we should include that with the comments back to the DNR.
We can do that, Austin. There's a letter, drop letter that the chair will have to sign off and will do the approval of that recommendation and will put something in there about that, just that it was not too, so.
And if this does pass, Jeff, you can give that to me and I'll sign it sometimes, please.
Right.
On this year. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Chair will break the tie with a nay. Very much. Next up, ten, approve plans and specifications for the following projects. A, F1-TSF-C094-142-5B-94 Nelson Avenue, one hundred seventy Street, RIB. B, RX-C094-144-61-91 Cape Shoulders, C56-D20-B59.
Booed. Play.
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Joel.
This is Jamie Joel, county engineer. These two projects are previously approved projects. This agenda is to approve the final plans before they're relayed. That first project, Paramount Forty-two, is around about south of the airport. And Paramount Forty-four is the Safe Streets for All Grant Project.
What was that? The what?
Safe Streets for All Grant, that's the grant we're getting now, grant we got for this year.
Did we ever hear about, about the plane?
Yes. Looks like that's all they're working on. Working with some paperwork with the Air Force Museum. They don't actually give us the plane. What she's talking about is the jet that's out in front of the air guard. The air guard just pulls it down and so we're working to and trying to take possession of that thing, but they won't actually give it to us. They don't give us forever. And still a lot of paperwork to go out. Who would have insurance and all that?
Any other questions or comments? I actually have them. The plans and specifications for that roundabout, are they the different ones? We've had workshops about.
Basically, there's been some minor tweaks to it. We do have a copy in our office in minutes.
All right, I do have a motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven, proof changing color of Ram pickup from white to gray for two hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Play.
They do. I have a motion and they sign it. Any questions or comments? Mr. Joel.
To approve purchase of this pickup last board meeting. The individual that will be signed for this pickup does all the asphalt discretion and the white truck. This mixed well, black asphalt. Signing the multiple objective target of all.
Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item twelve, approve a twenty-eight agreement with the IO and DOT for Safe Streets for All Grant Funding.
That's right, item twelve.
Oh, sorry.
Motion in second. Mr. Joel.
Same as it is, agenda number ten, this is a previously approved Safe Streets for All project. But the DOT it's federal aid, but it has to follow through the DOT. And so this agreement is just allowing the DOT to get those smells and be a test for them.
Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much, sir. Okay, item thirteen, go into closed session to discuss litigation in accordance with IO Code Section twenty-one point five one C. Do we have a motion to go into closed second?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion in the second, all those. Yes, roll call.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Hi, guys.
Conrad.
Conrad, aye. It's decided to go into closed session. So what we need to do now is clear the room so we can go into that closed session. And then we will open the door back up when we're moved out of that closed session to move on to item fourteen.
To move on to item 14.
Chris Dalton actually. But Dalton is pretty. Dalton. Welcome back, welcome. Is that everybody who was waiting outside the campus? I'm really grateful. Item 14 authorized board chair to sign resolution for approval of compromise settlement regarding central Iowa region on behalf of Roscoe County Iowa and Harjon County case number CBCV102247.
I'm sure I'll make the motion to approve, sorry.
And motion second, any questions coming? All right, this is a wall.
So.
I want to be known as unanimous. Oh, notes, next up is the citizens opportunity to address the board of items not on the agenda. That would be you, Randy, come in and come up to the microphone and say your name and where you're from, please. Like we don't already know.
Yeah, I'm Randy Hoover, I'm the director of Freedom Point, this is a mental health program which thanks to the state has transitioned into a community program because the state didn't think it was worth anything as a mental health program. I'm going to throw in, we're in 33 counties, see 1500 people a month and did not get a new contract at the redesign. Figure it out now. But anyway, it didn't matter. What I'm here for, first off, I'm going to probably set a couple of people up here to make the comment because I'm sure they will, but I apologize for leaving the hat on. I have a form of, I guess, skin cancer or something that you'll like this part, I'm growing horns. I don't know why, I really expect to miss the film, but I can comment about that.
Not certainly so.
But anyway, what I'm here for is we talked, I talked to a lot of people, especially lately concerning with the state. And I heard a common comment, what's wrong with Fort Dodge? Why does Fort Dodge act the way that it is? Why are they not involved with everything they're doing? Why are they not this way or that way? I don't think they're too concerned about it, it's just curiosity. Well, we also, because we see so many people in rural areas and we do things there, so we decided let's try to do it in Fort Dodge and see how it works. Now, I'm going to give you a little more backdrop, last night I spoke with the city council. And I think it's, is it chief? The police chief.
Quinn.
Quinn. He also heard me talk about it, everybody seemed pretty enthused about it, so now that we're on the spot. What we have proposed is a series of trivia challenges between groups that would be naturally different. Which means that we would like to propose you people take part in a trivia challenge against the city council. It'd be a public event, free, although there's people offering, you know, come to the toss. We have lined up a lot of you people, I don't know anything basic, it could be enjoyable, fun, it can be exciting, we will ask so many questions, first eight to 25 wins. But we're also pause every so often and ask questions to the crowd with them, chance to win prizes as well. We just want to bring people together and have fun and do something different that doesn't cost a lot of money to do. So with that said, we have papers that explain everything I just heard that you can take with you. My phone number is on there and to tell you how serious I am about this, I want new phones instead of taking it to that. Yes, and I'll give you a hint, new phones are way more expensive than old one I had, but that's beside the point. So anyway, that is the invitation I would like to make and I look forward to hearing from you if it works out. We're going to have a scoreboard, we're going to have a scoretaver, we're working on having other people kind of providing atmosphere and so on, so it's just something. I'd like to do, now, I kind of, I said we have a community program, we are a community program, we're also a mental health program, this is the reality of the situation. You're looking on the face of the earth, that's my opinion. It's good, bad, indifferent, doesn't matter what it is, everybody has it. And where I have ran into issues with the state, and I'm not pitting everybody the state, I do not mean it that way. They love to react when the disaster hits, why not slow down the disaster before it hits? I have stood in Walmart parking lot, I've stood in Fairway, I've stood in all kinds of places, just talking to people, if you walk by and say hi, how's your day going? You'd be amazed how many people will talk to you and they'll talk about what's going on and we have actually helped people with a lot of things just by simply talking. And that's the point we're trying to get across here, let's bring people together, let's get people out of their houses, stop isolating and get together and have fun and enjoy today. So that, that was really, that's it.
When do you, when do you hope to do this, Randy?
That's the next challenge, if I can get people, I know people are going to be there, then I'll meet the fans at a time. Place, we've got two possible places, Iowa Central, I've been told yes, no, maybe, like Iowa Central, depending on who you're talking to. The other one is the Opera House. I've had other people suggest other places, but I'm not that familiar with that, the places in Fort Dodge, I just know our center. I don't think it's big enough, I'm rather optimistic about the number of people around, I hope it's a big crowd. And date wise, somewhere here within, we want time to promote it, so we're talking that a couple, three weeks. And on Thursday nights, I try to avoid football, footballs every night anymore except Tuesday and Wednesday. And there's a place in town, district on Wednesday nights and I don't want a lot of them, I mean, yeah, the idea is not to destroy things instead of building them up, so I will avoid them. And so we're kind of thinking, I know I was supposed to ask me, do I want to, maybe you should go, I'm at the big stage. I said, really, do you have to ask? Of course I'm at the big stage, yeah, and they go, yeah, maybe you'll get to buy a tech station. I said, either one works, I mean, it's just, that's the idea, we got seven o'clock on Thursdays and it's an elimination. If you people go on and win, then you go on to face the next teams. I hesitate to say who the other teams are going to happen and try to talk to them, but we're hoping to get Fort Dodge police against the Wester County sheriff. I think like the big one for senior high against St. Edmonds. And then with that Iowa Central, we're trying to find an opponent for them that everybody seems to think the growth alliance might be a good one. That was, that's another one to mention. And I graduate from community business, it scares me to death.
I bring up the timing because Professor Conklin has been trying to work on some ideas for.
Chris Dalton actually. But Dalton is pretty thoughtful of the engineer sort of. And I thought most certainly. There. We've been partying and some meetings and stuff like that. Already was. Welcome back, welcome back. Is that everybody who was waiting outside? Totally, definitely. Item 14 authorized board chair to sign resolution for approval of compromise settlement regarding Central Iowa. Commission on behalf of Rockford County Iowa and Harjen County case number CVCV 102247.
Yeah, I'm sure I'll make the motion to approve, sorry.
I have motion in a second, any questions or comments? All right, this is Wolf.
Hi guys.
I want it to be known to this passage unanimously. Oh notes, next up is the citizens opportunity to address the board of items not on the agenda. That would be you, Randy, come in and come up to the microphone and say your name and where you're from, please. Like we don't already know.
Yeah, I'm Randy Hoover, I'm the director of Pretty Point, which is a mental health program. Which thanks to the state has transitioned into a community program because the state didn't think we were not worth anything as a mental health program. I'm going to throw in, we're in 33 counties, see 1500 people a month and didn't get, did not get a new contract, it's redesigned. Figure it out now. But anyway, it didn't matter. What I'm here for, first off, I'm going to probably set a couple of people up here to make the comment, and I'm sure they will, but I apologize for leaving the hat on. I have a form of, I guess, skin cancer, something that you'll like this part, I'm really gorgeous. I don't know why, I really expected Mr. Phil to make a comment about that.
Not certainly so.
But anyway, what I'm here for is we talked, I talked to a lot of people, especially lately, concerning with the state. And I heard a common comment, what's wrong with Fort Dodge? Why does Fort Dodge have to wait for that? Why are they not involved with everything we're doing? Why are they not this way or that way? I don't think they're too concerned about it, it's just curiosity. Well, we also, because we see so many people in rural areas and we do things there, so we decided let's try to do it at Fort Dodge and see how it works. Now, I'm going to give you a little more backdrop, last night I spoke with the city council. And I think it's, is it chief? Police chief.
Quinn.
Quinn. He also heard me talk about it, everybody seemed pretty enthused about it, so now that quick he's on the spot. What we have proposed is a series of trivia challenges between groups that would be naturally different. Which means that we would like to propose you people take part in a trivia challenge against the city council. It'd be a public event, free, although there's a free will offering, you know, cover the cost. We have lined up a lot of people, I mean, I don't know anything basic, it could be all for fun and kind of exciting, we will ask so many questions, first eight to 25 wins, but we're also pause every so often and ask questions in a crowd with them, chance to win prizes as well. We just want to bring people together and have fun and do something different that doesn't cost a lot of money to do. So with that said, we have papers that explain everything I just heard that you can take with you. My phone number's on there, and to tell you how serious I am about this, I want a new phone that's dedicated to that. Yes, and I'll give you hint, new phones are way more expensive than old when they are, but that's beside the point. So anyway, that is the invitation I would like to make, and I look forward to hearing from you if it works out, we're going to have a scoreboard, we're going to have a sporty bird. We're working on having other people kind of providing atmosphere and so on, so it's just something I'd like to do. Now, I kind of, I said we have a community program, we are a community program, we're also a mental health program, and this is the reality of the situation. You're looking on the face of the earth, that's my opinion. If it's good, bad, indifferent, doesn't matter what it is, everybody has it. And where I have ran into issues with the state, and I'm not picking on everybody with state, I do not mean it that way. They love to react when the disaster hits, why not slow down a little disaster before it hits? I have stood in Walmart parking lot, I've stood in Fairway, I've stood in all kinds of places, just talking to people, if you walk by and say hi, how's your day going? You'd be amazed how many people will talk to you, and they'll talk about what's going on, and we have actually helped people with a lot of things just by simply talking, and that's the point we're trying to get across here, let's bring people together, let's get people out of their houses, stop isolating, and get together and have fun and enjoy today. So that, that was really, that's it.
When do you, when do you hope when I do this, Randy?
That's the next challenge, when, if I can get people, I know people are going to be there, then I'll meet the fans at a time. Play, we have two possible places, Iowa Central, I've been told, yes, no, maybe, like Iowa Central, depending on who you're talking to. The other one is the Opera House. I've had other people suggest other places, but I'm not that familiar with that, because it's in Fort Dodge, I just know our center. I don't think it's big enough, I'm rather optimistic about the number of people abroad, I hope it's a big crowd. And, and date wise, somewhere here within, we want time to promote it, so we're talking that couple, three weeks. And on Thursday nights, I try to avoid football, football's every night anymore, except Tuesday and Wednesday. And there's a place in town, district on Wednesday nights, and I don't want a lot of them, I mean, yeah, the idea is not to destroy things instead of build them, so I will avoid them, and so we're kind of thinking, I know Iowa Central asked me, do I want the page to go, I'm at the big stage, I said, really, you have to ask, of course I'm at the big stage, yeah, and they go, yeah, maybe I'll get you by the tech station. I said, either one works, I mean, it's just, that's the idea, we got seven o'clock on Thursdays, and it's an elimination. If you people go on and win, then you go on to face the next team. I hesitate to say who the other teams are going to happen and try to talk to them, but we're hoping to get Fort Dodge police against the Rockford County Sheriff. I think like the big ones would senior high against St. Edmonds. And then with that, Iowa Central, we're trying to find an opponent for them, that everybody seems to think the Grove Alliance might be a good one. That was, that's another one to mention. And I graduate from community business, it scares me to talk to them.
I bring up the timing because Professor Conkrin has been trying to work on some ideas for celebrating the 250th anniversary of the United States becoming a nation, and I was thinking, shot off the top of my head, wait till next year, that could be incorporated into the trivia about the United States.
Yeah. Well, I, yeah, well, they just had a honor at the end of World War II down at the library, and we were part of helping with that. And oddly enough, I signed up for some of the prizes, and one of the prizes I won was tribute history to Fort Dodge. I thought it was kind of, I live with that, yeah, but I've been seeing things on my phone about the past of Fort Dodge, there's places I forgot existed, and then there's places I remember why I forgot that it existed. But, but yeah, so think about it, we'll pass out the paper to everybody. I thank you for the time.
Thank you, appreciate it, it's been a pleasure today, anyone else? All right, moving on to Board of Supervisors Community Reports, Supervisor Cole.
Not too much reported, nonetheless, we've so I'm good to go for right now.
All right, so.
Nothing really to report, just a reminder that I am in the Board Supervisors office from 8:30 to 10:30, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday. Anybody who wants to speak directly to the supervisor.
Supervisor Mike.
Partnerhead next week, and then got Iowa, Creek, WLA meeting on Monday.
Supervisor Montgomery. Great, the ceremony?
Oh, I guess I'm going to Des Moines on Thursday, we're swearing in a bunch of baby lawyers. Yeah, I'm a part of law examiners, we always have ceremony, we got a 79% pass rate on the bar exam, for some of our exam.
Is that good?
It's not bad, but my University of Iowa, I'm especially proud of, we passed 42 of 44 test takers for a 96% pass rate from New York.
I think we also graduated from Iowa. Anything else, sir?
Seems to be people want to be attorneys, so they don't pass, just go to University of Iowa, they'll pass anyway.
All right, on the 28th of August, there was the overdose awareness event at the city square, I wanted to thank everyone who organized that and who spoke at that. Wanted to compliment Mr. Driscoll, there were mentions of the positive influence that drug work had on folks there, and how they wouldn't have been able to look out that, so much appreciated, yeah. On the 30th, we have the Nestle's Purina 50th Anniversary Celebration out of the community orchard, that was really a cool event, was it not? And then the 31st, there's a late night picnic, picnic, picnic at APIS, and that's put on by the Western Iowa Federation of Labor, so I wanted to thank everybody who helped with that. APIS also did their, who think, at the same time. Today, well, right now, they just probably cut a ribbon at Derry Beach, so we won't talk about that, but there is a Greater Fort Dodge Grove Alliance member meet and eat at the orchard at noon that I will be attending. Tomorrow I have the EMS Advisory Council at 9:30 in the evening, Friday is city county, I don't know if I'll be able to go there. And then September 17th, I have a meeting with Visit Fort Dodge, I think that's enough. Next up is to allow claims.
Second.
Motion in a second, any questions or comments on claims? All right, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, unless she carries, if there's no further business, I entertain a motion for return.
Salute, second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed, we are returned, thank you so much.